Good evening and welcome to this evening's school board meeting of the Fairmont Area Schools. It's Tuesday, August ninth, two thousand sixteen, and this meeting is called to order. For roll call this evening, I Nicole Green is present, Dan Brookins is present, and Danielle Schutz is present. We also would like to note that Superintendent Brown is not with us tonight as he is in training meetings up in the cities. A special note, this meeting must conclude at six P M. due to the primary election. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The minutes are before you. If you've had an opportunity to read them or go through them, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I've read the minutes and I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the July twelfth meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Thank you Danielle. There's been a motion to approve the July twelfth, two thousand sixteen minutes of the school board meeting as presented. And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Now we're moving on to the agenda. There is one change in the agenda. If you look at it, we are supposed to do the superintendent's evaluation report on that. However, because Superintendent Brown is not here, we will postpone that until our next meeting. Any other changes or additions to the agenda? Seeing as there is none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you Dan, a second?
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve the July twelfth, two thousand sixteen, school board meetings as presented and amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. We have no celebrations or school and community reports, however, I would like to remind everyone that if you haven't had the opportunity to vote today, the polls are open until eight P M. I will do the superintendent's report and calendar, and it's a full one. Tuesday, August ninth, is our school board meeting, which we're having right now. And also, I believe it began a few days ago, there was online registration that opened for all students in the elementary and junior senior high school. This Friday, August twelfth, and Monday, August fifteenth, is actual registration at the school, at the high school. And at that registration, it's important to attend, even if you've already completed the online registration, so that your students' pictures can be taken for the yearbook and also for their IDs. The new teacher workshop begins August fifteenth, seventeenth, excuse me, and we have seventeen new teachers that will be participating. August twenty-second is the S D C C retreat meeting from eight thirty A M. to three thirty P M. That Rufus will be attending, and at this meeting they'll discuss new curriculum, staff development, goals for the district, and results from previous testing. August twenty-third is our next school board meeting. And Monday, August twenty-ninth, begins the back-to-school opening session for all teachers. And Wednesday, August thirty-first, is the Fairmont Junior Senior High back-to-school conferences. Thursday, September first, is the back-to-school conference at the elementary school. And those conferences, you can sign up online, or you can do that when you go to the school. If you have any questions, you can call the individual buildings. The first day of school that everyone's been waiting for is Tuesday, September sixth. Any additions or comments on the calendar? And a special note, on Friday, August twelfth, there will be a school board meeting at the business office conference room. It's a canvassing meeting to canvass the election results, and that will be all of the business that will be discussed then. Okay, thank you. Moving on to financial business. Sue? Oh, I'm sorry, we'll do the donation first.
Yep. I have a couple here in Appendix A first. I would introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas Services for Challenging Youth has donated one thousand dollars toward the cost of hiring a speaker, Jerry Ackerman, to serve at the October seventeenth workshop. Be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift.
Thank you Dan. We will have, let's see. Okay, we need to take a roll call vote. Give me a second first. A second, thank you. It's kind of hard only having this three up here. Seconds, and I'll take a roll call vote. Danielle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Dan?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And there's a second gift in Appendix A one. I will move for, or I will introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas Stephen and Barbara Keel have donated a nineteen eighty-six Corvette valued at two thousand five hundred dollars. Be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second, thank you. There's been a motion, a second, and I'll take a roll call vote. Danielle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Dan?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. And moving on to financial reports and bills. Sue?
Right. Tonight on the agenda, we have the approval of the July two thousand sixteen treasures report, the July two thousand sixteen single checks, wire transfers from July eighth through August fourth, and payment of the July twenty-sixth and August ninth bills. So I'll begin with the wires and transfers. On that sheet, the very first item you have is the dollar amount that we have put in to employees' V I B A accounts and H S A accounts, and that's based on what health insurance plan that each individual employee has selected, and also based on their district contribution that they have based on their employee group. A few down from that, we have the net payroll for July, which was four hundred and fifty-six thousand. A few down from that, we have our pathways to early learning scholarship program funds that came in for the summer program of just under eleven thousand. And then you can see our total payroll disbursements for July were one million two hundred and eighty thousand. And on the flip side of that, you have the July two thousand sixteen treasures report. So this is the end-of-the-month cash balance we have by fund and by account within each fund. You'll note that the debt service has thirteen million, and just a reminder that this is because the bond proceeds from the last bond sale are being held in escrow until we can pay off those bonds. So you'll see that large dollar amount here until February of two thousand nineteen. Any questions? Okay, then we can move to the single checks. All of them are dated July one, and the majority of them are for memberships or those types of things for the start of the sixteen-seventeen school year. So we don't like to pay those before June thirtieth, because then it would be considered a prepaid, but we do like to pay them as soon as we can, so we wait till July one. So like the first one, A S C D, that's Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, and that's the membership. A few down, the M A S A, that's Minnesota Association of School Administrators, again, that's our membership. And there's several of those. And Julie Lowey did come in, and we reviewed this register on June twenty-seventh, before those checks were mailed. Then moving to the registers dated July twenty-sixth, there are two registers, and that's because at this time of year, we're still paying our expenses for the fifteen-sixteen school year, as well as for the sixteen-seventeen school year. So the register that starts with Angela Simmering, that is for the fifteen-sixteen school year. Just one to bring to your attention there. That's check number fifty-eight-six ninety-three, made out to Robinson Appraisal. And this is for a new appraisal for the market value of the Hunt Farm. Our auditors do require that about every three years, we have that land appraised. So that was the cost for that appraisal. And then the other register that starts with Select Account, that's for the sixteen-seventeen school year. And just one to bring to your attention there. Check number fifty-eight-seven thirty-two, made out to Trimco. This is for a partial payment for the roofing project that is happening this summer. And because we did not have a board meeting on July twenty-sixth, Julie did come in on July twenty-fifth and reviewed both of these registers before payments were made. So now the last two registers you have are dated today, August ninth. One, the shorter one, is for F Y sixteen, or the fifteen-sixteen school year. The first check on each happens to be Fairmont Awards. So the second check is the payment to Clifton Larson Allen. So that's the register for the fifteen-sixteen school year. And that payment to Clifton Larson Allen is a payment for our audit for the fifteen-sixteen school year. The audit is not complete, but they do like progressive billing. They came in July and worked on the preliminary audit, and they'll be back the week of August twenty-seventh, or twenty-second, to find out, to do their final field work. And then the other register where the second check is Park Supply, that's for the sixteen-seventeen school year. Check number fifty-eight-nine forty, fifty-eight-seven forty-six, made out to C D W Government. That's for the purchase of fifteen projectors for in classrooms, and then also for a computer. Check number fifty-eight-seven fifty is for E Spark. And E Spark is a new software program that we're going to be using. It's a student-centered product that captivates unique interest and challenges learners at all levels, and inspires creative application. And so during this sixteen-seventeen school year, E Spark will be used in all of the second-grade classrooms, two kindergarten classrooms, one first-grade classroom, and two third-grade classrooms as a pilot to see how it works with our students. It will be used on the classroom set of iPads, and it will help the teachers differentiate reading, learning for all of the students, no matter what level they're at. And so Mrs. Rosen does look forward to coming to a future board meeting to share with you how that's, how that is working, because it is new.
Quick question. Do those classrooms each have a classroom set?
I would say they must, because that was her note to me, is that it's based on the classroom iPads, so they must have iPads in those rooms.
Okay.
But I can double-check if you would like. I believe that to be correct. And then the last one I have to bring to your attention is fifty-eight-seven sixty-six, made out to Matrix. And this was the summer project that we had with, in the I T. Technology Department, for upgrading our core switches and upgrading our Wi-Fi system. So, and this is a E-rate eligible expense, so we will receive a seventy percent funds back on this one once, once we do all the work to get that done. Do you have any questions on any of the registers?
Thank you. If there's no questions, further questions or comments for Sue? I will move to approve the July two thousand sixteen Treasurers Report and Single Checks Wire Transfers for July eighth, two thousand sixteen, through August fourth, two thousand sixteen, and payment of the July twenty-sixth and August ninth, two thousand sixteen bills. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Danielle. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you Sue. All right. There is no old business, so moving on to new business. Danielle?
Yes, we have a consulting services agreement. We requested that Dave Turnberg provide consulting services to Tyler Garrison for one year, effective July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth of two thousand seventeen, at a fee of three hundred dollars a month. Dave agreed to this service, but due to the P E R A. requirements, the agreement needed to reflect an effective date no earlier than January first of two thousand seventeen. The agreement was therefore revised to be effective January first two, should that be two thousand seventeen?
Two thousand seventeen.
Seventeen. Through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, at a fee of six hundred dollars a month. Dave is, however, working with Tyler as needed during this time. A copy of the proposed agreement is enclosed in Appendix B. I make a motion to approve the consulting agreement between Fairmont Area Schools and Dave Turnberg, effective January first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Thank you Danielle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Dan. We have a motion as second. Is there any discussion?
Well, it's just, it's just such a good idea, because Dave had been with the district for so long, that he, he, he's probably forgotten more than a lot of people know about our buildings and how they run, so it's going to be very beneficial for Tyler when he comes across something, that he can do that. And then Dave will, I'm sure, be able to help him out, so.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. B. M S B A. Membership. Dan?
Minnesota School Boards Association offers our district valuable services in the areas of board training and development, and they serve as a resource when questions arise. This year's M S B A. Membership fee is five thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars, which reflects an increase of fifty dollars over last year's fee. The fees are based on the enrollment of our district. I make a motion to approve renewing the Fairmont School District M S B A. Membership for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year.
Thank you Dan, second?
Second.
Thank you Danielle. There's been a motion as second to approve renewing the district's M S B A. Membership. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. C. M S B A. Policy Services. Dan?
Likewise, we continue to utilize much of the information offered through Minnesota School Board Association Policy Service. We adopt their policy manual in full six years ago, and it is very beneficial to use their policies as a base resource. Then we adjust to customize it to our best fit for our district's procedures and guidelines. The charge for this year's policy service is six hundred fifty dollars, and that is an increase of twenty-five dollars over last year's fee. I make a motion to approve renewing the district's M S B A. Policy Service for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Danielle. There's been a motion as second to approve renewing the district's M S B A. Policy Services for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. Any discussion? Thank you. I'll say it's very handy to have the M S B A. Policies available. They keep us up to date on what comes from the state, and it's a very, very good reference to make sure that our district is functioning and, and following the proper policies that's set forth by the state and the Department of Education.
It's invaluable when you have one of those questions, it comes up, you know, it's those rare situations where you're like, oh, what do we do there? Oh, just refer to, to that, and it's a, it's a great place to start, so.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to D. Amended Southern Plains Joint Power Agreement. Dan?
Okay. The Southern Plains Education Cooperative Joint Powers Board is recommending to amend the Joint Powers Agreement. Changes move some of the billing of expenses in order to more accurately reflect the actual costs. Changes to the districts will be fairly minimal, however. Specifically, changes include the costs for equipment like copiers, professional services, and technical services will be billed to the district based on how much the district uses the cooperative, rather than basing the costs on the enrollment of the school district. Additional changes were made to update the agreement to current practice and to update any legal references that have been changed. The amended agreement is enclosed in Amendment C. And I know Julie would have had an opportunity to go through that with Sarah Ministat and Superintendent Brown to look at the specific changes, but again, it's just, it's mostly billing items. I'll make a motion to approve the amended S P E C. Joint Powers Agreement.
Thank you Dan, second?
Second.
Thank you Danielle. We have a motion as second to approve the amended S P E C. Joint Powers Agreement. Any discussion? I know that we'll come back to it in a year, see how it works, and if there needs to be any changes made, so. Any other discussion?
There's always some adjustments, depending on the sizes of the schools involved. Last year, we added United South Central to that district, so that makes some changes, so there's just always a little tweaking to do.
Any other discussion? All right, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. We'll move on to new business E. The November School Board Meeting. The regularly scheduled board meeting is on an election day or evening, and by law, we would need to be done by six P M. Also, we need to have a meeting to canvass the election results between the eleventh and eighteenth of November. Therefore, Superintendent Brown is recommending that we have one board meeting in November, and that would be Tuesday, November fifteenth, so we can canvass the votes, and that we'll be able to have a meeting without the time pressures of being done by six P M. If it is determined that a second meeting is needed during the month of November, we can schedule that closer to the date with the appropriate time, with the appropriate amount of time before the meeting. With that, I move to approve changing the school board calendar to reflect a meeting on Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Dan. Any discussion?
It seems to me that we were doing a lot, we can probably do more of this, where we would have just one meeting a month, except for in certain months when we have a lot more items on the agenda. In this case, it's just kind of the way that the dates fall, the calendar falls. The second, you know, Tuesday for our meeting being the election day is, is really kind of awkward. So just that one is going to be much more efficient for us to do it that way. And then you also don't have to worry so much about Thanksgiving week as well, so.
Thank you Dan. Any other discussion? Okay, there's been a motion and a second to move the regular school board meeting to Tuesday, November fifteenth, for the month of November. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to personnel. Danielle?
Yes, we have one resignation. Megan Finkbiner? How do you say that? An interventionist aide has resigned her position effective July thirteenth, two thousand sixteen. Megan had been employed with the district for two years. I make a motion to approve the resignation of Megan Finkbiner, effective July thirteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Dan. We have a motion as second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to personnel. B. Contract settlements. We had negotiations that Julie and Superintendent Brown were involved in with various groups throughout the school. We had the computer-aided instruction coordinator, the performing arts manager, the instructional supervisory aides, media technicians, business office personnel, and custodial maintenance personnel. Those contract negotiations have concluded, and it is recommended that we approve those contracts. The general highlights of those are, looking through them, all of them have a fifty-one cent per hour increase for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year with a fifty-five cent per hour increase for the seventeen-eighteen school year. Most of them have some sort of an increase to their health contribution, and their, that's, that's basically the general highlights of it. With that, I move to approve the following two-year contracts for the two thousand sixteen through two thousand eighteen school years. Computer-aided instruction coordinator, performing arts manager, instructional supervisory aides, media technicians, business office personnel, and custodial maintenance personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Danielle. We have a motion as second to approve those contracts. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Board committee reports. I will do the Staff Welfare Committee. We met on Wednesday, July thirteenth, from four to five fifteen in the William Bud Room. We discussed the custodial maintenance negotiations that Julie was involved with, and the possibility of adding a, an additional custodian. We also discussed this S P E C. Joint Powers Agreement, which was approved this evening. We talked about the robotic stipend. We really need to move that stipend for the coach for the robotics program, so it's more in line with districts in the area and reflective of the amount of time in the amount of time and the work that that coach puts in with the students who participate in the robotics program. We also discussed the change in November school board meeting date, and that Alex Schmidt, who was previously a dean at the elementary school and is currently in Germany as an administrator of a private school, will be returning, and he wanted to let the school know that he will be returning and would be interested in serving in our district again. And that was it. Any questions about that? Okay. Superintendent Evaluation will be waiting until next week, so unless there's any further business that we have not discussed this evening.
Well, one thing I thought might have snuck in on the agenda, but I know we just got the signatures from all the different schools, but I'm sure it'll be on our next agenda, is that our school soccer programs will be adding another school to our current co-op, so we'll have some students from Jackson County Central that will be participating in soccer with Fairmont MCW Grenade Huntley's chain. The, we just added JCC to that co-op effective for this fall. So I'm sure that'll be on the, the next agenda, the next meeting that we have in two weeks.
Okay.
It's the only thing I noticed that I didn't make it in.
Okay, anything else?
That and the fact that a lot of people were looking and probably thinking, where is everybody? But, but this is the, this is the minimum number of people we can have at a meeting. And since we have five board members serving currently, and the sixth is being elected today, so by the next meeting, we will be back at full strength. So we have five members now, and you need a quorum, which is sixty percent, so three out of five is sixty percent, so.
Yes, and I, once again, want to remind everyone to go and vote. Thank all those citizens who have signed up to run for the school board, and wish them all the best of luck. Thank you. Anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn the school board meeting at five twenty-two PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.